Maybe I'll remove it like friends.
Yeah, but, uh, well, friends will do it. We didn't know.
I might get off the grid.
No, no, no.
I didn't get laid by the.
You know, free. You got like.
I put it in.
In Fort Loudon State. They sent out questions and they're about ten years ago.
So it's anyway, say.
Yeah. See, no, no, no.
They brought, they brought him to Florida. You know, from Chester, who he made, he put the shirt on. And then you know, it's. For years. When they said, you know, the name, they had never went to her. They did. The constellations that ever played with.
But they was going around.
I don't know.
Yeah, it's running. I guess. It's not friends. Because they was going to. It was two things. But Emily's Landing, what is it? One of the two, and Emily's Landing.
I don't care. I don't much know.
I keep saying it's like Paul. I assume that would go around.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the Loudoun County Regional Planning Commission. Would you stand with me, please, to pledge allegiance to our flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Ron Braden, Jim Brooks.
Here.
Todd Kennedy.
Here.
Keith Buckles.
Here.
Pam McNamee here. John Napier.
Here.
Leon Shields.
Here.
Mike Waller.
Here.
Jimmy Williams.
Here.
Do I have a move to accept the minutes from the June thirteen meeting? Did we get them?
Were they in your emails?
I have copies of them. I apologize. You and me got to make y'all some copies.
We will vote on this next month.
Send them with next month. Okay.
Okay. Planned agenda items. A rezoning request to remove PUD overlay from C two, PUD applicant John Valant. Property owner Chester Franklin located Highway three twenty-one, tax map zero twenty-seven. Parcel zero twenty-five, zero twenty-seven, zero ninety, zero eighty-eight, zero eighty-seven, and seventeen point zero one. C two general commercial district, PUD planned unit development, District Three, approximately twenty-four point forty-two acres. Or is either Mr. Valiant or Mr. Franklin here today to speak on behalf of this? Is there anybody here to speak on behalf of this?
Oh, not on their behalf, no.
Okay.
Motion to table.
Got a motion to table?
Excuse me.
And it's, yes.
Can I, before you table up, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is there somebody here that can explain to this room of people, which are largely interested in that item? What goes on with this urban growth thing? Because we know it's showing up on the Nor City agenda. And I'll tell you, I doubt there's anybody that understands how a Nor City Planning Commission comes into play on a piece of property that's in Loudoun County. It's only because of the urban growth plan. You know, our energy is, is hmm, we got people making decisions about our neighborhood there. And we don't get to vote far, far against those people. Doesn't seem right, but I understand that's done at the state level. But can somebody explain to these folks how that works? Little still education.
Loudoun, is it, did you all remove it?
Uh, that is correct. Uh, Emily's Landing sets in the urban growth boundary, which a lot of properties in Loudoun County do. Primarily out Highway three twenty-one, up Highway eleven, Martel area, that, that joint area. Uh, the commissioners regime can kind of tell you a little bit of the backstory of why the urban growth boundary exists. There has been discussions in the past with some of the commissioners about reevaluating some of those original lines. Taking out some of those properties like Emily's Landing of why Lenore City would be looking into those properties that's across the river. That LCB really doesn't have any plan to ever annex or, or ever look into, or shouldn't have any kind of regulatory authority over due to the codes, building inspections, building permits, et cetera. So in the past previous years, Fort Loudon Estates one and two, Emily's Landing, and those developments in the front. We've had galleries full of folks from that area before to hear some of those cases. Now, just because they didn't show up at the most recent one, that they come and ask for permission to remove the PUD, doesn't mean that some of the folks from that area still hasn't come in the past. Now, I think the commissioners in that area may have even attended.
How you know there's no sign that goes up and I don't want to publish an agenda?
Most of that, uh, they publish an agenda, but it probably doesn't, it just goes to the staff members and some of the elected officials. It's not sure.
I've spent weeks looking for the Lenore City.
I'm sorry.
Agenda. I've spent a week looking for the, uh, agenda of the Lenore City.
That's probably.
The only place I can find it is on Van's website.
Correct. That's probably a question of Beth Collins. She's the city planner up there, and I'm sure they'll put.
But, but the point is, is they don't have, these folks don't have any way to know that you're going to be talking about their neighborhood.
That's really a Beth Collins question to see what their protocols are. The only reason I speak on it, I sit on the city planning commission's way. So the operation of the office, the details, the signage and all that kind of stuff, you'd have to ask the office. I don't know the, I don't know the fine details of it.
Okay. It's just to us, to me, there's people that are making decisions about our neighborhood that we don't vote on. We vote on the people that y'all are voting to.
Absolutely.
Commissioners.
And, and, and I can.
These folks here don't vote for Lenore City.
Agreed. And, you know, I brought that issue up over the past several years. Commissioner Shaver can, uh, and I, I don't know if Commissioner Randolph's heard my voice before. I, I voiced the same thing in everybody in this room's voice. There's no sense that cities hearing that particular case. Now, on the other side of the river, out three twenty-one and stuff like that, I can see where it's feasible. But Emily's Landing, we, I just don't see that.
And Bella's Landing.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, yes. I keep referring to Emily's, that's just a name I remember.
Me and Leon was talking, I asked him a question. That's in Lenore City's urban growth areas, but we make the decision, and then whatever we do on rezoning goes to the county commission. So it is actually us and the county commission that's making a decision.
You're still, you're still electing the people that's hearing your voice. The problem is the urban growth has to be heard by the city first.
But we.
But it can still be turned down by county commission.
But we heard at the last meeting that the site plan would be approved in Lenore City. It was not an issue for Loudoun County. So what actually, once you rezonate, what actually takes place on that property? These people have no voice to the people who are making that decision because they don't get to vote on them and any kind of what.
Well, as chairman of the commission, just like commissioner or chairman Napier, anybody in the room has the voice to hear. So you may not be a voting member, but your voice is still heard.
But that's where my point is.
I agree with you.
That Lenore City Planning meeting kind of in the dark from the same point of when y'all, you know, with your agendas.
Yeah.
I mean, most of these folks don't care to come to these meetings every month like I do.
Just for the knowledge, though, there's urban growth area people that sit on the board as commissioners that are not city residents or not city affiliated, affiliated. They're, they're in the areas of like Fort Loudon or Bella's or Emily's Avalon. They're in the urban growth area to represent that, that territory. Very valid comments, very valid questions. Beth is probably the one to, to get down to the nitty gritty, but it's something that we've heard that, that case before. And even the officials. Commissioner Shaver would have to comment on this, or, or Chairman Napier. It's my understanding to change those boundaries, all the parties have to come again, agree on the new urban growth boundaries and approve it as one party. So that's each city that's, you know, the county, that's everybody has to redress.
I've researched the urban growth. I mean, you're talking about something that was done, what, ten, fifteen years ago?
Predates me.
It's kind of stale now. Yeah. Uh, so I have one more question. This is the second meeting that folks from this community have come to hear about this wonderful change that's taking place in their community. And there's nobody here to speak to it. I think y'all should put it on the table and deny it tonight. That's my request. If you vote on it, we deny it.
Can I say one, can I also? Can we second it?
Go ahead.
Last month, it got pulled off the agenda. It got pulled off. Then it, but it was going to R one. It was going to residential. Then it went to Lenore City for residential, and it's actually required, but nothing happened. Now it's back here for purely commercial. My head is spinning. I'm not sure what.
Chairman, if I can comment on that, all I can do is, is tell you what happened at the Lenore City Commission meeting. The initial request to the Lenore City Planning Commission was to have it rezoned to an R one, removing the PUD. Prior to the meeting, they requested that we not rezonate to a residential setting, that they only wanted to remove the PUD that was already restricted by the county, uh, for that, you know, for that, for that area and for the PUD overlays as far as creating a moratorium several years. So the Lenore City Planning Commission took the roll call vote to just remove the PUD off the commercial zoning. So what passed in Lenore City was nothing, not a rezon, but just to remove the PUD overlay in which the county don't allow anyways. So it was really just to clean up. There was no plan presented. There was no scope. The attorney that spoke on, on that behalf didn't have any knowledge of what the future owners was going to have. I think he was, he was representing the existing owner that was going to probably sell the property.
But Leon, when you say cleanup, expand on that terminology.
The county does.
I want to say, the attorney thought the meeting was at six. He's going to be here in a few minutes and can probably answer.
That's the chairman's comment.
I mean, yeah, Mr. Chairman, he's, he's going to be here. He says he's driving now and should be here well before six, so.
But it, on my, on my cleanup comment, I apologize for that. Everybody in the room, if you don't know this, Loudoun County Planning Commission or the Loudoun County Commission doesn't allow planned unit developments anymore, the, the PUD overlays. So that was something that was pre-existing that got adopted years ago, which now wouldn't pass the county now. Is that correct, commissioners?
That's correct.
So it's really just taking the PUD overlay that's not allowed now anyways.
But you say that, Leon, a PUD was a residential development with a little bit of commercial.
I'd have, that, that predates me on the original, so I don't know why they asked for the PUD. Y'all remember?
Originally, the entire development was one big thing. You got the commercial out front and all the residential behind, and it was approved as an R one with a PUD overlay. The whole thing. Now, the plan was, now, how many of y'all was here? When we went to the meeting at, uh, Rome State with the Leo, I don't know if you remember, the Leo family originally owned that. And it was going to be a gorgeous, beautiful thing, and I mean, the plan was fantastic. We did at that time, I believe it was oh-three, we rezoned the whole property. Front was commercial, back was residential, and there was a PUD overlay on the entire thing. I don't know why there was a PUD on the commercial because you can't build residential and commercial zone property anyhow. So that's, that's where it came from. Uh, Mr. Brooks was there. It was, it was quite a hoo-ha back then. Looks like another hoo-ha today, so.
Well, my point is, in the PUD, it's got, it's supposed to be roughly ninety-five percent residential. And, and any commercial is supposed to be small, less than three thousand square feet established. So it was years for years, it's been designated to largely be a residential piece of property. But now all of a sudden, because with this smoke and mirrors and we don't have PUD available anymore, we're going to say, oh, but it's commercial.
It's been commercial since day one. It's always been commercial.
PUD does not mean it's going to be commercial. It means it's going to be residential. You need to read, it's still online. You need to read what your zoning rules say. I know we don't like a PUD here, but, and I raised that question when y'all were getting rid of the PUD. Well, what about the existing property? Well, there are going to still be PUD, and we'll still have those rules around. Now we want to say, well, because it doesn't exist anymore, it needs to go away. That's kind of switching things on me there.
All I can speak on, perhaps, the knowledge that I have about it is they've requested to remove the PUD, the PUD overlay. I don't vote. I only break the ties, and it was an unanimous decision to remove the PUD. Now, the background of what the attorneys wanted. But now, they only requested not to rezonate to the residential, only to rezon, or only to remove the PUD off the overlay.
Is, is it going back to the original two or three? Or they trying to?
I have no knowledge of any of that. All I can speak on behalf of what happened at the.
Approving all that and going.
I'm sorry, sir, I don't know. That's a question you could probably ask whoever's going to represent the, the project.
We got a motion on the floor to put this off till next month and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say the five, the same eye. Close night. We'll see you back here next month. Well, the lawyer needs to know what time to be here. If, uh, you're here for this and want to leave, you will not hurt our feelings in the least if you want to get up right now. Yes. Let me have one more.
I live on Conner Lane. This is a point of clarification. So who does the site plan approval? It's done by the planning commission in Lenore City? Assuming the rezoning happened?
Yes.
Is it done, is not done by the county?
No.
How can Lenore City rule on that when it's in the county?
That's the rules of the urban growth boundary. That's the rules of the urban growth boundary. I've got two subdivisions right beside my house that are like that.
I'm sort of glad so many people are leaving, but I don't want to be, uh, supported out as a smart aleck because I'll stand up if I have to. But where were they at when it, we landed and were approved? I mean, that's right there in the back door, do they, would they prefer to have more homes in their backyard or a turkey crate?
I don't know that.
I think they're going to get one or the other.
We're moving on.
Moving on.
B subdivision plan for eight lots, Jackson Crossing subdivision, property owner Benchmark Associates. Tax map zero one zero K, parcel zero zero one point zero zero, zero zero two, zero zero three, zero zero four point zero zero, and zero nine five point zero zero, zero nine six, zero nine seven, and zero nine eight point zero zero. R one PUD, suburban residential district, District Two. Anybody representing Benchmark Associates here? Come on up.
Hello, I'm Danny Mormon, Benchmark Associates president, ten three way, Arden Valley Road. I'm here to answer any questions you may have regarding this project.
You're adjusting the lot lines to the buildings?
Adjusting the lot lines to where the buildings actually got built. Way it was originally in there, the buildings weren't going to fit.
Are they all built now?
Yes, sir.
So this is the last one we'll see.
Yes, sir.
I'm most, I'm motion approved.
Got a motion in a second to approve. Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Close night. C subdivision plan for four lots, property owner Jesse McMillan and Brian Hare, located Beale Chapel Road, tax map zero twenty-eight, parcel zero forty-five point zero zero, A two rural residential district, District Six. Mr. McMillan or Mr. Hare here? Oh, over here. Go ahead.
Sir, I'm Brian Hare, fourteen thirty-one Ridge Climber Road in Knoxville.
Jesse McMillan, three eight two Axton Drive, also in Knoxville.
All we're looking to do, this is an approximate eight acres of property, and we're just looking to break that into four lots. Lot one being one point seven two acres, lot two being one point eight five, lot three being one point six two acres, and lot four being two point two three. And we've already received T deck approval on the site to do five bedroom homes. So we'd be building four or five bedroom homes.
Okay.
Everything in order, Jim?
Everything's in order in the highway department. Sit back with Bean, with, good with road connection also.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. Set a move in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify the saying aye. Close night. Good to go.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Four, county commission action on planning commission recommendations. Jim Horr. Any other commissioners?
Nothing, they, uh, they approved all the recommendations that were sent to them last month.
Okay. What about the codes?
Mark. We don't have anything additional to add.
Any additional comments from the public? You save it for next month for update from the planning department?
Uh, nothing to add.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to adjourn this meeting? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. We are adjourned.
This board waits for nothing.
I know, no.
I've sent them a letter. For a Mac.
Everything all right at church?
We'll be there. That wasn't worth it, was it? You could call that. See you, man.
So straight to call, uh, BZA Loudoun County Board, it's only the fields, the orders, and they done road call.
Ron Braden, Jim Brooks.
Here.
John Napier.
Here.
Leon Shields.
Here.
Mike Waller.
Here.
Everybody that's here is going to speak on anything tonight during this meeting, need to rise and raise their right hand and repeat after me. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you may give in the cause is now pending before this commission will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Thank you, be safe. Everybody read the minutes?
Move to approve.
Maybe you can go.
We get them next month. We get them next month. Planned agenda items. Verge requests to live in existing home on property while building a new home. Will tear down old house when receive CO. Advocate property owner Carlos. Hinter, Hinterkred, I can't say it. Located sixty-six twelve Loudon Ridge Road, tax map zero two five, parcel one four three point zero zero, A two rural residential district, District Five, approximately one point seven acres. Carlos? Tell us what you got.
Well, I'm trying to do my house, sorry, afternoon. Trying to do my house behind where I'm living right now. So I can, I'm going to be able to turn down what I'm leaving now when I got the other one ready to move in.
So you are going to tear it down when you get your house?
Sure.
You got anything to do?
We've done this in the past. I think the best thing to do is give him a timeframe as to once he receives CO, a time limit on when to have the old house removed.
Have you started your house? You hadn't started.
No, I don't have the permit yet.
How long do you think it'll take to build it?
Um, and. Say, maybe sixteen months.
How long?
Sixteen months.
Sixteen months?
Yeah.
Well, usually just go a year, but we can extend it. Right, Jim?
Yeah, I think it'd be fine to give him the timeframe to get it done. Just once we issue a CO, just setting a timeframe of within a period of a month or two, the old house has to be removed.
You think you can have your house tore down in sixty days after you build your new one?
Oh, yeah.
I'll, I'll make a motion, give you sixty days after CO.
I'll second.
Got a motion in a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Close likewise. You're good. Item B, special exception to run business out of home due to medical condition. Advocate Lydia Manzano, located seventeen fifty Strange Road, tax map zero zero seven N, parcel zero four six zero zero, R one suburban residential district, District Five. Lydia?
This is my friend with Creswell. My second language is English. In case that I get confused, he can juggle for me as a friend of yours. The reason what I asking for, um, is to build my little spa in the garage. But the house are renting because I was diagnosed with MS, with vertuperosis five years ago. And this is a progressive condition. And I get more fatigue and some kind of urbo. Time to time, I used to have a lot of clientele. My salon is in Faragut. But because my health condition is not as before, I do less clientele every month. And the reason what I want to move my business to my garage in the house is because I really can't afford to rent, you know? Faragut rent is really expensive. So the reason why I want to do my garage, at least if I get fatigue, I can rest at home, but I still keep my business because I go work for a living. I do skincare, so I'm a licensed technician. So that's what the reason that I, you know, form medical position because I need to keep working, you know? I'm not ready to retire, so.
What kind of a business is this?
This is skincare, like treatment for the skin.
For the skin?
Oh, okay.
Like facial oozing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I've not received any calls on it. Uh, she was asking me about doing this, you know, she's going to have to do some things in this building, you know, in her garage to be set up for this business. And, and when you read the home occupation, there's things that are allowable and not allowable. And then, of course, it goes down to any type of unacceptable business thing by the BZA. So my recommendation to her before she spent money to do this is to come before the board to find out if this would be a suitable home occupation based on the amount of volume of traffic coming in and out, how much clientele she has. And the only other thing I'd ask is, I'm not sure, are you the homeowner or are you a renter?
I'm a renter.
And, and she's not the owner of the property, yeah. Just wanted y'all to have that information and say, yeah, we feel this will be suitable or not suitable.
Is the people that owns the property here?
They already give me the okay.
How busy are you?
Probably four clients a day, like four, five hours. It's by a morning only. It's not going to be a lot of traffic because it's just me working, so.
You're not going to put a big sign in the yard over here?
No, I was asking him what, what is the sign that I can, I need to put like a little sign to show my customers where the, the skincare is. I want it, so.
Anybody here got anything? Anybody got anything to say against it or for it?
So you're going to be the only employee?
Yes.
You're going to have a staff? Have we done this in the past?
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've had some that, that's come to find, to make sure that it's a suitable home occupation prior to, to invest in and moving forward. And then, of course, you have your others that are probably doing it and without complaints. I just didn't want her to get a complaint, then come before you all with a complaint.
Only problem I've got is she's renting, but she says the owner's in agreement with it. But if it gets into twenty people a day, then we're going to have a problem.
No.
But I'm just saying.
Yeah.
My, my probably only concern is, is the signage at that Strange Road entrance. You know, it's a very blind curve through there. Traffic's, you know, fifty miles an hour. So the setback of that signage is probably important for the people trying to pull out of that intersection.
I would have.
Very dangerous spot.
Yeah, I would have to read the zoning reg. There's a little bit of zoning reg for signage for home occupation, but it's going to be small and it'd have to set within the setbacks, you know, off the roads.
And hurry, and hurry y'all.
Absolutely.
Not down on the road.
No, it's not going to be able to be down on the road, no, certainly.
Yeah, my house is the first house right there off of the curb, so.
Are you in sight?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make the motion to okay. Have a motion.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Any more discussion?
Good luck on your, your hills.
All in favor, say aye. Close likewise. You're good.
Thank you.
Anybody else got anything?
Some will hear, like, some additional public comments.
Good evening. My name is Tim Boyer. My wife, Mary Boyer.
My name is Tim Boyer, I'm like Mary Boyer. We filed a complaint with you all back when our neighbors, back in January fifteenth of nineteen. They wanted to build a building to breed and train dogs up where we live at. We're in section A two. Where their business is at is over on A two on Jacobs Road. What I understand by talking to some people and all that, A two is not zoned for this. Since this has happened, you know, we've been humiliated, destroyed, can't get nobody to work for us. My wife has cirrhosis galliparierna, we never brought that up before. We was doing a procedure that day for her when you guys had this meeting, we couldn't come. And my wife wrote a very lengthy letter to you all, it's four pages long. You guys denied them this, to put a building up and, and do this. In the last week and a half, I believe it's been a week and a half, because we went and seen Jim about it, they have moved all their buildings on seventeen hundred Jacobs Road back in the back, there's a metal building back there, it was owned by Mr. Jimmy Russell and his wife, Ally. He's a linesman for Low North City Utility Board. It's, uh, no, Jacobs Road is, their name is Wilson. They trained vicious dogs back there. They moved out of there, they brought a huge kennel with runs in up to their property. We live on Walkin's Road. We bought the property off Ron Crowley almost seventeen years ago. We was the first one to build up there. Because we bought this property, other people is looking to sign on for their five acre tracks. Yes, we're from South Florida, that it was time to make a move because my health condition is in hurt. This is our final place. After you guys meeting that day, and you guys adjourned, if I may approach you all, this is the text that I've got that night, at six fifty six at night after you guys adjourned, from him.
Wait a minute.
It's back in January you guys wrote on it.
This year?
Uh, nineteen, I believe it was.
Two thousand and nineteen.
January fifteenth of nineteen.
I never said nothing or done anything about this until just recently, when it on, at nighttime, these buildings was hauled up there by, if I'm not mistaken, one of Mrs., Mr. Curtis's semis. The semi was so long, it had a forklift on it, had to lift the first building off. It's the biggest dog kennel I've ever seen, okay? They plan on boarding dogs there, which we're not zoned for that. Mr. Crowley wrote, made us all sign restrictions. We're not allowed to breed dogs for profit or anything like that. This guy's company is Canine Services Unlimited, okay? If you do any research on him, you bring his name up on the thing, I encourage you to. Because there was a young man lost his lot down in South Florida by this man. Not saying whether it was right or not, but the dog that he still owns, his dog's name is Zeke. Zeke was turning loose after this guy laid down on the ground and ripped the guy's face off his head, all right? This is what we're looking at, his dogs coming down the road with their bread. They are breeding Belgian Mouts at the facility.
Stop, stop right there, this man, I'm confused.
Okay.
If, no, just stop, man. If the county denied it and they're doing it, why ain't we shutting them down and you shouldn't even be here?
Here's what I think may be some of the story, because I, I actually got a call on this the other day. And Jim, tell me if this is right.
Yes, sir.
These folks wanted to start their business at this property and come before the board, and we denied them.
That is correct.
They, after the fact, went to Davis Ferry and set up practice by leasing a facility over there, which is the Wilson and the Curtis property, that they come from.
Ah, so that's where they're at.
The call that I had got the other day was that they had broke that contract and that lease, packed up their stuff, and was taking their practice of canine training back to the property that we had originally denied.
Maybe.
Because they broke their lease on Davis Ferry. So my understanding of that is they're operating illegally on the property where you're at, because we had originally done that. And they also, I think, broke the property leases on the property that was zoned accurately for that.
So everything is correct? They were, they come before y'all, they were heard, they were denied.
I don't know the restrictions.
Well, they were denied because.
First denied, then what?
Didn't last. But, but as far as it's worth, I've been to the site today. From what I can see from the, you know, the main road coming in and the trailer behind, I saw two buildings that had been moved up there. Neither building appeared to be over five hundred square feet. Neither building is on a permanent foundation. So there are no permits required by Loudon County, they are compliant with their setbacks, it appears. So they're not required a building. So it takes us to the other cause where they operating their business. I saw no dogs on the property. I saw no activity on the, on the property at all today when I was on site to state that there was any type of violation occurring.
Did you say this was on Jacobs Road?
No, this is on Walkin's Road. I live at twenty nine twenty six. There is four buildings that have been brought in over there. One, the first one that came in was a very huge dog kennel.
Yes.
These things run between eighty and a hundred thousand dollars. This is just not a local business. This is went from the local, and you're talking about Jacobs Road, they entered Jacobs.
I said Jacobs, but it may be Walkin's, I'm not.
Well, no, Jacobs Road, it was in there on the eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, okay? And.
I had just got the complaints that they were going to start a canine training facility there, and that was the one that the planning commission had denied.
That is correct.
I got that call a couple of weeks ago.
And, and he's complained to me about that, but, and that's what I'm saying at this time, I'm not seeing any violation.
There's four buildings that's been brought up by Curtis.
But the buildings are legal, right, Jim?
If the buildings are less than five hundred square feet and not on a permanent foundation, they are not required to have a permit.
Is the kennel, is the kennel under five hundred square feet?
To the best I could tell, it probably was. I don't have just a right to access to a property and pull a measurement on that building.
No, I wish.
But it, it does not appear to be over five hundred square feet. It looks like it's probably thirteen foot long by fourteen, fifteen foot wide.
What I'm getting at is you guys denied this because of breeding dogs and with the, and training these dogs in a building that they want to build. The purpose of the building that they want to put up is a whole new subject. If you want to check with your parks and recreation, right over here on seventy two, he's already rented that building once, to do a knee pole collar training. That's only the beginning. When he starts getting the training done in the building that he wants to put up, then he brings in the heavy guns, it's called bite and decoy.
But I don't, I don't understand what you're getting at.
What I'm getting at.
I understand what you're getting at, but Jim's telling you that he was over, there's no dogs there, there's buildings that's legal, and ain't nothing we can do about.
There was no dogs there, but every day.
But when it happens, then we'll have to do something, but they ain't doing nothing, we're just assuming.
Six days a week, there's been trainers and handlers coming there. Our traffic coming past our house.
Has there been dogs over?
Yes. They're brought in early in the morning and taken out at seven o'clock at night. They're using the theory that as long as they keep it under four dogs, that's impossible.
I mean, I, I, if we've denied it and they're doing it, it needs to be shut down, is all I can say.
I mean, they brought all these buildings, they brought their whole business up there. What I'm getting at.
But you got to catch them.
It's not a local business, it's not only a national business, a state business, it's a national business. Now it's an international business.
That's ridiculous.
When he starts leaving the country and training classes and all that, it turns into an international business. So you're looking at some, the bottom line is Belgian Mouts, and I can't even say the whole name. If you do the research on them, and I know some very dedicated trainers that do not train these no more, they're professional police officers that are now dog trainers. A Belgian Mal, a low end one will bring fifteen thousand dollars, a high end one will bring over a hundred thousand dollars. They've turned their own facility into a breeding facility. Now these dogs are maybe four or five months old, they're bringing those dogs up to train them up there. My biggest fear is that you guys denied this already, now it's going to be pushed forward, it's, you're basically saying it's okay, but in the same token goes, if one of these dogs gets over that four foot fence, and there's only fifty feet between my, my fence and theirs. I have an eight-year-old grandson that I watch right now, three days a week, and if his dad should enter the hospital because he's got failing kidneys, I sometimes will have that little boy two months at a time, depends on how dad is, is that, how long his dad's in the hospital. I'm afraid even let him go out and ride his bike around the five acres, or ride the golf cart with me, or us sit on our porch at night, because they have seven dogs of their own. They have one pit bull that has come to my gate three times, and on the third time, I just recently got a beautiful golden retriever that is valued at five thousand dollars.
Do they live there?
Yes, they do.
Well, you're talking about a civil matter now, we got nothing to do with it.
It's not a civil matter.
It's all in our deed. All this is.
Ma'am, if we've denied it, we've denied it, Jim's been over there, he says they're legal, just be quiet a minute.
Okay.
He says there's no dogs there. We can't do nothing. If you got a gun, go to killing them's what I tell you to do. Or it's a civil matter. It's a civil matter.
You guys denied them.
We did, and he says there ain't nothing there, so what are we supposed to do?
Let me finish, I'm going to show you something else. When you guys denied them, they slapped you guys in the face about five days later. They had Anderson County deputies up there with the gate wide open, no leash on the dogs, no muscles on the dogs. I called, let me finish, please. I called Anderson County, they called their deputies, had them removed, because they said they was in a training facility. They wasn't in a training facility, they was in his yard.
But why did you call Anderson County? Why didn't you call Loudon County? Anderson County, we ain't got nothing to do with it.
Anderson County, Loudon County is not going to come up there and run them off. But let me finish. Eight thirty that night, the mayor of Anderson County called me and said, Mr. Boyer, can you tell me what happened? And I told her exactly. She said it would never happen again. I said, has your dogs ever turned on anybody? She says, yes. And I said, well, I'm going to tell you right now, one of your dogs come over my fence and threatened me and my wife and my grandkids. I got one, my oldest grandson is not allowed to come to my house because of it. Anderson County had two deputies at their house pull dogs out of the car, okay? That happened, okay? And then, this is what happened five days later, this is what I've been looking at for three years. That's why I can't get nobody to work for me.
That's a civil matter.
Yeah, it's a civil matter. Man, are you going to wait till a child is hurt? There's other children up there. Are you going to wait till something happens, somebody gets attacked by a dog? There was a woman.
What did Jim tell you?
There was a woman in Delmo Village that had her own dog and killed her.
Be quiet, man. What did Jim tell you?
Right now? I haven't talked to Jim since last week.
What did he just say in here, man?
He said there, there, he only seen one building.
We can do, Jim said, it's a civil matter. Hurry your lawyer and go to court. Hurry your lawyer.
No, it's in our deed.
All right, let me say this to you. Let me say this much, this, how are you going to appeal? Since you denied it once, and Jim said he only seen one building.
No, I didn't. I said, I've seen two buildings up there, I seen other buildings that have permits.
I've got pictures of every one.
I seen the two new buildings. What I stated is we had permits for some of those buildings, the two new buildings down in the back corner that are sitting there, one building with a sign on it, one building which is the dog run.
You told me the only active permit that they had was on their existing building that they wanted to put up.
They have a building for a shed, whatever. We can research permits another day.
Okay, please do, sir.
There's a dog run building, and there's a new building that's been brought out there that you mentioned they were hauling in.
I suggest you hire a lawyer.
When you guys denied all this.
We denied it, we're, that's an evident fact, we denied it. Jim says there ain't nothing going on, ain't nothing we can do about it.
This is going on.
I came, I came here at good faith.
We've done good faith, we do what we're supposed to do. It's a civil matter. Get it through your head, it's a civil matter.
I'm going to say this, this much to you.
Say it to me, and then we're adjourned.
This much to you.
Say it to me.
God forbid it happens to a minor up there, because one of these dogs got loose, it's going to be on your head, your deserved.
That's fine, we denied it, and Jim says there ain't nothing up there, it's a civil matter.
I can say something if I may.
Hurry, make it fast, because you're not even on the agenda, so make it fast.
I'm with my husband.
I understand it, make it fast, we got to go.
But there, we, we had assigned papers when we bought this home for seventy, the land, seventy two thousand dollars, which we bought. We had restrictions, and we have them, I've got six copies, everything we are allowed to do and not allowed to do.
It's a civil matter, ma'am.
It is not.
It's a civil matter.
Don't enforce legal restrictions.
Mr. Crowley made us all sign restrictions.
Everybody make a motion with adjourn.
Mr. Crowley made us sign restrictions, we was not allowed to breed for profit or train dogs for profit.
Second.
They are training dogs for profit. So you're going to sit there and ignore this?
Or not.
We did exactly what you would have wanted us to do.
It's, it's, are you a lawyer? Are you a lawyer?
The only power we've got.
Call the sheriff, everybody, you have a problem.
We don't, we don't.